Welcome to the May regular session of the Opelika Planning Commission. Commissioners, I need a motion on April's minutes.
I move they be approved?
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Matt, do we have any updates on previous Planning Commission meetings?
Just want to let you know that the, I believe it's Shelton Village rezoning that you approved back in April, or excuse me, in March, will go before the City Council for second reading at the next meeting. They've had their public hearing, but will go for the second reading next Tuesday.
Thank you. Today's agenda calls for a public hearing on several of the items. If you have, if you would like to speak and have a concern or an issue, come to the podium located on your right and state your name and address and you will be allowed to speak. Matt, let's go to item one.
One time only.
Oh, I'm sorry. You get, I was reminded, you get to speak one time only on the same issue. Thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The first item on your agenda today is the National Village subdivision plat 8A. This is a preliminary plat approval request. This is for, located in the Robert Trent Jones, or on Robert Trent Jones Trail. And it's part of the property owned by the Retirement Systems of Alabama, represented by Max Vaughn of Goodwin Mills and K-wood. Currently, this property is undeveloped, and I should make a note here, it's currently Zoned PUD, but that is, that is incorrect. Part of it is a PUD, and then you have the orange piece here that is on the map, that is actually Zoned R3 currently. There is a later item on your agenda that will be to rezone that to be part of the overall National Village planned unit development. The applicant, though, is requesting a 51-lot subdivision access from Robert Trent Jones Trail, National Village Parkway, and Lake Lodge Boulevard. And so you have Robert Trent Jones, it kind of makes the curve here, I believe, Lake Lodge is the one that comes in from Robert Trent Jones, and then you have the other, which is National Village Parkway. The current master plan in this area shows 26 lots, and that is largely, I think, because this area that was part of the R3 was not at the original time owned by the Retirement Systems of Alabama, and so they're requesting to amend that planned unit development later on in your agenda to bring that in. And then they've added some additional lots in this area shown as Street B, but we'll get to that. The overall density for this, it basically doesn't change much at all because we're talking about a density over 1,200 acres. The proposed units are fairly similar in size to what's in Section 7. They range in size from 7,500 to approximately 20, or excuse me, 26,000 square feet. Most fall in the line between 9,000 and 11,000, and that's what you see primarily here along Street C and Street A, and then Robert Trent, or National Village Parkway. The smaller lots are located up here off of Street B. There are a couple out parcels that are created by roads and through here, and so that's out parcel A, out parcel B, and then you have out parcel C and D, which are near the entrance to the development off Robert Trent Jones, near the existing home that is there. We did note that the home needed to be added as a, either described as being a part of a previous plat or divided property, or needed to be included in this subdivision for the final plat. Should note that the master plan originally showed Street B here, connecting down to Street A as a connection. What they've done instead is shown Street B as being a smaller kind of cul-de-sac with what we call a hammerhead turnaround, which is basically a turnaround that's used in kind of smaller and less densely populated areas with less traffic. And then we noted that Street C is, is right here. Again, this was, this is a new street that was not previously mentioned in the master development plan because the property at that time wasn't owned by the Retirement Systems. We felt the sidewalk should be consistent with the rest of the development pattern of the PUD and utilities be underground. With that, we're recommending preliminary plat approval, subject to the following, that parcels A through D are open space or green space or common area, and note who will maintain these areas. Install sidewalks on at least one side of all streets are consistent with, and be consistent with the master development plan. All utilities should be underground. Note the proposed setbacks. Out parcels B and C have incorrect labels on the revised plat. They just, the acreage does not meet the square footage. And then label the lot number for the existing house if it is a new lot, or if it's an existing lot, note where it's, it's been previously platted. And Mr. Parker will be handling all the engineering comments today.
Sir, the preliminary plat and the infrastructure proposal has been reviewed, and the engineering department finds acceptable for the connection of National Village Parkway and the additional side streets, which are to be constructed as public infrastructure. Just like any other subdivision with public infrastructure, the developer will be required to submit plans to the Department Engineering. Public Works and Utilities for review will approve their plans, monitor the construction for quality, and then, once it's completed, will, the subdivision will come back for final plat. The engineering department has reviewed all the comments, and they have been addressed, and we recommend preliminary plat approval for this application.
Right, yourself?
Yeah. Water service is available through the subdivision by the water main in the right-of-way of Robert Trent Jones Trail, and Opelika Power Service reports that this is outside of their power service territory. Before you open the public hearing, I did mention there were two letters that were sent in. We did distribute that to the Planning Commission, and I'll briefly read these in, since they're fairly short. It says, "Dear Mr. O'Gran, we've received your certified mail letter pertaining to plat approval for property located on Robert Trent Jones Trail. Our residence is 2914 Lone Eagle Lane, Opelika, Alabama, which is adjacent to the property proposed to be replatted. I'll be unable to attend the public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May 25th because of a full patient schedule. Please accept this letter as our emphatic objection to the proposed plat approval. We were among the first residents to purchase a home on Lone Eagle Lane. This proposed replating varies significantly from the National Village master plan, which we were shown at the time of our purchase in January 2010. The new plat, if approved, would cause Lone Eagle residents to lose green space behind our house and continue to destroy and disrupt the national wildlife habitats and contribute to what is becoming an overcrowded village by allowing homes to be built too close to our residences. Best regards, Brian, Dr. R. Brian and Teresa Boozer." And then the second letter is, "Dear Mr. O'Gran, please be advised, I have received your certified letter pertaining to plat approval for property located on Robert Trent Jones Trail. I live at 2912 Lone Eagle Lane, Opelika, Alabama, which is adjacent to the property proposed to be replatted. Because I work out of town, I am uncertain as to whether I'll be able to attend the public hearing, which is scheduled for May 25th, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. Please consider this my emphatic objection to the proposed plat approval. The reason for my objection is that the proposed replating varies significantly from the master plan for the National Village upon which my neighbors and I based our decision to purchase our homes. The new plat, if approved, would allow homes to be constructed in an undesirable proximity to our present residences." And that's on yours very truly, Mr. William L. Larry Nix. And I will note that Mr. Ab Connor is here representing the application today.
This time, this item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Have you on our grid, neither one of these ladies?
Hello?
Or just some of that?
Hi, Mr. Chair, Board, I appreciate you letting us be here today. My name's Buddy Clydewell. I live at 2908 Lone Eagle. I agree with the two letters you've already read. I don't have all the proper words that they had, but I agree with everything that you hear. The plat, the supposed plat, my particular home is going to be the closest. The gentleman that was moving the cursor around and showing you guys different things, I wish he would show, would you move your cursor over where the Lone Eagle homes are now?
Right here.
And I live actually right in the middle of the block, so I would be the closest, one of the closest to these new homes being developed. What I do not see in the plans is, what kind of distance are we talking? Like, what is the, I mean, the plat's been drawn up, I don't know by whom, Mr. Connor, but, you know, how close are these homes going to be to my home? And I don't, I don't read that in anything. Also, never received a certified letter. I live there, it's my vacation home, you know, I live there, so. Can anyone answer that for me? How close are we talking? 50 feet, 20 feet?
It looks like here you would be somewhere between 50 and 100 feet, between the back of your lot to the back of the other lot.
Right. Which would mean that all of that, all of the wooded area that was mentioned in the two previous letters would basically disappear. Well, it would really disappear, because 50 feet of a few trees.
Can I have you go up to the podium when he finishes?
So, I agree with the two proposed letters that you've already read. I agree with everything that they say. I think you're imposing a little bit, a little bit much for the main reason that we moved there, and those particular lots was because of the green space. And I think that the acquisition of this 3.9 acres that was acquired by whomever changed your master plan to put more homes in there, which we totally disagree with. The master plan that was on the board, that's on the street over there as we sit here, is perfectly fine. Road going through, a few houses have been built down the road, but because of the acquisition of the property, it has said, oh, well, we can build more homes in there now, which is, which infringes on why we on Lone Eagle bought on Lone Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Nix. I live on 2912 Lone Eagle, and I wrote one of those letters. I brought with me, just echoing, when we purchased, and I realize these aren't official plats, but this is what we were shown as marketing.
Sir, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure, I'm sorry. Usually, people have the opposite problem with me talking. But we were shown this, and I'm sorry, I just had to have these blown up at CBS, so I'm not a surveyor. I'm a lawyer, don't hold that against me. And you can see that we expected these to be here, and we were never told that RSA was in the process of acquiring this, and that if acquired, the master plan might change. Mr. Clydewell and some of the other folks who purchased here earlier relied on this. And then lo and behold, sort of, I won't say in the middle of the night, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on anybody, or accuse anybody of disingenuous behavior, but all of a sudden, if you go to the master plan that's posted, you have this little, sorry, I don't have a place to hold this, you have this little place, and I realize it's not exactly as the plat that was shown on the overhead, but all of a sudden, you get this. And we didn't get a copy of this letter, nor did we get a copy of this plat until very recently. I didn't anyway. And it came to my office, I work in West Point, although I live down here, so I got the certified letter. And I have to echo what Mr. Clydewell said, and other people, some of whom may follow me, that one of the main attractions to our home is being able to look out at the green space. Now, again, because we got this proposed plat, may I ask, is there a representative of Goodwin Mills and K-wood here?
No, they don't have a representative here. Mr. Connor is here representing the application.
Well, the reason I say that is, as a lawyer, I found that you catch more flies with honey than vinegar, rather than just sit up here and adamantly say, "We object to this," and you can have, either have A or B. I think it might be advisable to the board, upon advice of your own attorney, possibly to defer action on this, I know this is a public hearing phase of this, but defer action, and possibly if we could meet with Mr. Connor and the RSA, we could come up with an amended plat that might satisfy everybody. And now we're kind of at the mode of, you either take this or you don't. And we object vehemently to it, but who knows? Mr. Connor seems like a reasonable man. I sure enjoy living in one of his houses that he built, but I do also treasure the ability to look out my back door and not see somebody else standing 50 feet away cooking a hamburger. So, I guess my suggestion is, is if we could possibly defer, wait, you, could possibly defer action on this, allow us time to meet the interested residents of National Village, to meet with RSA and Mr. Connor, who knows? We might be able to come up with a compromise that satisfies everyone. So, I brought these to show you what we were shown, and now what all of a sudden has sort of appeared seemingly overnight. This is what we based, turn it around so you can see it. We live here, we knew eventually this road was going to be developed. We were not told that there was any intention of RSA purchasing this piece of property, or if purchased, to cutting a road right through here. Somebody else who may want to talk, my next-door neighbor who may want to say something else. It's already dangerous coming out of our drive, because people are coming around a pretty sharp curve going to the golf course, and if you put a road in right here, there's going to be some traffic accidents occurring, in my humble unofficial opinion. So, I guess bottom line is, A, we were not told this when we purchased, and we relied on what we thought when we purchased. B, I would ask that the board defer on action on this, to give us an opportunity probably to work with the developer and RSA. We may be able to come up to a satisfactory compromise. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Milton, love lady, my wife, Wanda, and I live between Mr. Clydewell and Mr. Nix, and we raised the similar objections when we first purchased. You know, I pulled a copy of the plan, saw the space behind us, which is not that much space, and it's a nice barrier between us and the road. I will second Mr. Nix's objection to the, to the road going in. I would suggest anything new that is built around there, not come off of that main to the golf course road. People come through and they hit the, the second roundabout, and then, then there's a curve, and as we come out of the Lone Eagle, you have to, you have to be careful for them coming. You're talking about another road, not more than 400, there's just not much room in there for a road. So if there's going to be a development of any sort, I would say, do the road from the sales office to the post office. That will take a lot of traffic off of the main road going to the golf course, and then access off of that road. But, there's not that much room in there to, you know, to have homes. We would be 50 feet, and 50 feet is, is not very, not very far. The other thing that I would say is, the first plan we saw had no development there. If you go to the sales office right now and look at the proposed plan, there would be five houses behind us, and the certified letter that was sent shows there to be eight houses directly behind us, eight on one side, four, I think, on the other. We strongly, adamantly oppose this, your approval of this plan.
Thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
I'm Ab Connor. I live at 281 Greystone Lane in Auburn, and Connor Brothers is a joint venture partner with the Retirement Systems to do this project. And we actually started buying land in 2005, that we would, we would contract for the land and then assign it to RSA. And this is one of the last parcels, the second to the last parcel we bought, and it's always been kind of a donut hole with our development. But if any of these gentlemen had asked me, or anybody with us, we had always proposed to buy the land and develop it. And the intention really here is to connect National Village Parkway to National Village Parkway, which will take a lot of the traffic off of that Lone Eagle road, and we have complaints constantly about people cutting through their subdivision, their road to get to the post office in the back part of the project that's been developed since then. And so really, this will help traffic flow tremendously. The Oak Bowery connection is something the city of Opelika helped with, and it's National Village Parkway, and it's just a segment right in there that's never been built because we didn't own the land that we needed to develop this property. So, I don't really know, meeting with anybody would help any, I think that what we submitted is legitimate. I don't think there will be a house within 150 feet of their houses, and certainly, we intend to leave the buffer that's there now behind their houses, and I think a minimum of 100 feet between their property line and their property lines, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, need a motion. Got to have a motion, fellas and ladies, and then we can bring it up for discussion.
What is the motion?
I have motion for preliminary approval with staff recommendation.
Who said that?
Mr. Collier.
Where is the second?
I'll say it here.
Any discussion now?
I've got a question. I'm hearing 50 feet, but you're really talking about 50 feet between property lines as a distance. Distance between the housing, where the house would be what?
At least 100. Yes, sir.
There was one gentleman that made a suggestion about the road placement. Is that a possibility there, or do you all feel that the road placement, how you have currently presented, is the best for traffic purposes?
The best way to do it is the, it's not a straight line of the road. People drive very fast on roads like that, and it's going to be a concrete road, it's like several of the others that we've done out there, it's not wide, so it's not in their domain. Road will be asphalt, the National Village Parkway. That is the intention, that road goes all the way over Bowery, and goes into the internal part of our development, and so it will be an asphalt and ride, wide road, but the, not its lanes will be concrete roads, and we're always very careful about leaving trees and not doing any more upgrading than we have to. This land next is pretty flat, so it won't be as disruptive as others.
And the natural area in the back of the homes, will that remain at 50 feet, 75 feet?
Just some quick.
Just scaling it off quickly, the closest point from here to here, looks like it's, going a little bit closer, looks like it's around probably 75 to 90 feet.
How far?
75 to 90 feet between the closest points shown here, and that's from the back of the lot line to the back of the lot line. So, as it gets further out, you should see more distance, and then there would be some, some distance between the actual homes.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Matt. How deep are those lots that are the closest two points? How deep are the lots?
How deep are these lots?
Yeah.
The, yeah, these lots look like they're 140 feet plus or minus.
How far?
140 feet deep.
Okay.
And so, in, in National Village, the lots, most of the lots are set up to where the homes are set 10 to 15 feet off the front, but that doesn't mean that there might not be some accessory structures or usable yardage back, yard back there.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir, you can come, but you need to come back to the podium. He did say one time. I don't mind a question.
A question for the developer while the motion is being considered. Again, I had suggested that we get to meet with this. Would there be anything that would prohibit us if the board passes this preliminary plat approval above the ejections, a meeting with Mr. Connor, and reaching an arrangement with regard to the preservation of the green space, and dedicating that space that's so short into possibly something that we could dedicate with him? Is there any prohibition against such an arrangement? I didn't think so, but I, I wanted the full board to hear that question. We'd probably, assuming there's plat approval over which we object, we'd like to still meet with Mr. Connor to preserve that green space, which is so precious to us. Thank you, it was just a question if we could.
There would not be any city regulation that would prevent that.
Is there any further discussion?
So, so what was the answer to that, as far as dedicating that space?
So, we've asked on the plat, for final plat, to clarify what that space is going to be, whether that's going to be dedicated to open space or common space, however they classify it, and there's some minor distinctions between that potentially, but I, as in most of National Village, this would become part of the protected green space within the development based on what we, what we think he's proposing here. And so, that, that is one thing that we've asked for him to, them to clarify between now and final plat if you so approve it. And so, preserving that through either some sort of other agreement or notes would not create any issues with any city regulations.
So, there would be no other building in that space?
There wouldn't be any access to this other than, the lots don't touch each other like they do lots in the additions. This is a buffer space in between the two, like we have throughout National Village, we've not backed lots of lots, you know? That space is owned by RSA right now. Theoretically, you know, when they completely develop National Village, probably not in my lifetime, but when that was completed, then they might turn that over to homeowners, but right now, Retirement System owns that one.
So, is that a yes or a no?
I saw that, you don't know.
Oh, okay, you can't speak for the Retirement System?
Well, everything the Retirement System has is public property, as you know, and, but this is intent that would never, there's no access to the area between their houses, so.
Well, there is access there.
Well, there's no, in other words, RSA owns the land in between the two lots, but there's no, there's no way to put a road in there or anything.
Ab, let me ask you a question. Do you have any control over that space that we're talking about here? What kind of control, if any, do you have?
I can, I can tell that nothing happens to it.
I mean, do you own it, or?
No, no, I represent the Retirement System.
Well, can you answer Matt's question from the point?
And this is, this is, and I might be able to explain it a little bit more, is, later on in your agenda, you have the addition of this property to the master development plan. If this property is rezoned in the master development plan, as, as shown based on this, this plat, the city would take the position that this is a, a buffer space similar to the others that they have within the development, and so we would not allow additional lots to be placed in here or development.
But I think the major question that I'm hearing, is anything going to be done to it to thin it out or anything like that? Because I think they want to keep it as a barrier. Is that not right?
Yes, sir. That was my question.
Can you control that is what my question?
I can. You know, there might be some drainage concern or something, but that, or we're not going to go in.
Is there any way the city can control it?
Not, not unless the commission were to require it to be left undisturbed.
And that would have to be done in the way of the motion?
That would, that would have to be done in a motion, yes, sir.
Okay, I understand.
Question to add. Is, is there any urgency to your development as far as delaying to have a discussion? I hear an awful lot, or appears that there are people that've got their concerns who are residents there. But you have an objection to, to moving towards a discussion to see if you can resolve something here? I hear you saying that it probably is going to stay as a undeveloped area.
There are, I believe, 28 days to the next meeting, so the, the planning commission is within their authority to, to table it if they would so choose. Typically, that requires, anything greater than 30 days requires the applicant's approval. Requires the applicant's consent to be tabled.
Well, this, you know, we would like to get on with it, and it has to go to the city council, so it would be advantageous to us if this was approved. And we certainly don't object to any kind of notes put in to leave the property in between the lots untouched, really. There's no reason for us to want to do it.
What if I made my motion? I made my motion to leave the area between the lot lines undisturbed.
Say it one more time, Mike.
I made my motion to leave the property lines, in between the property lines, undisturbed.
Same with the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
What exactly is the motion?
So the, the motion would be?
The motion would be approval of the preliminary plat, subject to all staff comments, plus the condition that the area between the lot lines be left undisturbed.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Go to item two.
Yes, item two is a request for a revised preliminary approval. This is McDonald Downs subdivision, second addition. This is located at the terminus of McDonald Drive. The applicant is Legendettles Baseline Surveying Design LLC, representing Grandin Hayes with White Ridge Opelika LLC. Currently, the subject property is undeveloped. It's zoned R3. You'll remember this meeting, this application from, I believe, your March meeting. The applicant was requesting preliminary plat approval of a 19-lot subdivision on 42.27 acres. The 19 lots have access off of McDonald Drive here. And here is the plat largely that you approved last time. The, the discussion and what the applicant is requesting, I think some clarification on or some ability to, to work on, is that they are in the process of trying to close on a connection to, from White Road to the larger piece up here. So here's a kind of a zoom out of that. And they would have a connection across an adjoining property to connect this, this larger remainder parcel to White Road. At the, at the March meeting, I believe it was required that they show that connection more before the planning commission was really willing to entertain not having direct access shown onto, to this remainder parcel. And so they've come back with a, an exhibit showing that. It's my understanding that should the planning commission grant approval, that they would close on the connection and then they would be able to subdivide the property as proposed. We're still recommending preliminary plat approval, subject to the following, that they install underground utilities and sidewalks on at least one side of the street. Prior to final plat, access shall be provided to the remainder parcel A, which is the, the large piece up here, either through a flag or a sub-street in this current addition as we recommended in the first time, or from a flag or a sub-street on White Road. And with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe Mr. Brett Baskin of Forsyte is, is here representing the case. And Mr. Parker will have some comments for engineering.
Engineering.
Yes, sir. The engineering department has reviewed the proposed infrastructure to be installed and, and, except that the placement has met the standards of the Public Works Manual. Just like any other subdivision with, with infrastructure to be placed, the developer, developer will be required to submit plans to the Engineering and Public Works Department for review and approval. Once these have been made, the construction can proceed with the observe, observation and guidance of the Engineering and Public Works Department and Utilities. Once the construction is complete, a final plat can be submitted for consideration. The engineering department recommends preliminary plat approval for this application.
Opelika Utilities Board notes that water service is available through a water main in the right of way of McDonald Drive. Opelika Power Services reports that this is inside both Alabama Power and Opelika Power's service territories.
This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed, commissioners.
Motion for approval with staff recommendation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item three.
Item three begins the preliminary and final plats. Both of these are requesting preliminary and final plat, and they're both in the planning jurisdiction. Item three is Plum Creek Division. This is a division of Lot 2A. And so here you see the subject property. It's located adjacent, or fairly close to city property near Spring Villa. So here, off of Lee Road 151. The applicant is Nathan McBride, representing Billy Allen. And again, this is undeveloped property in the planning jurisdiction. The applicant's proposing a five-lot subdivision for preliminary and final plat approval. They note on the plat that it would be for residential use. This portion of Lee Road 151 is currently unpaved. And the lots range in size from seven acres to 64.96 acres. All the lots would take access from Lee Road 151, and the lots meet the minimum 15,000 square foot requirement for a subdivision in the planning jurisdiction. We do recommend preliminary and final plat approval, subject to a note showing the width of the gas line easement that runs through the property.
Engineering.
All the review comments have been addressed. If this submitted plat meets all the mandatory requirements, because this development is outside the city limit, Lee County Engineering Department will review and comment on the plat for county standard requirements. Opelika Engineering Department recommends preliminary and final plat approval.
And Opelika Utilities Board reports that this is in the Beauregard Water Authority service area. Opelika Power Service reports that this is outside their service territory.
This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed, commissioners.
Make a motion for preliminary and final plat approval, staff recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item four.
Item four is a request for a preliminary and final plat approval, again, in the planning jurisdiction. This is the Stephen W. Corbett subdivision, redivision of parcel 4A and C. This is located on Lee Road 158, which is north of Columbus Parkway, going towards Columbus. The applicant is Barrett Simpson, representing Stephen W. Corbett. Again, this is another five-lot subdivision. Here you see the lots who are, total area of 79.15 acres. The lots range from four acres, the smallest ones up to 62.5 acres, which is this large remainder parcel. You can see it better in the small inset down here, so it kind of comes up and curves around. All of the lots meet the minimum 15,000 square foot lot requirement in the planning jurisdiction. Planning staff recommends preliminary and final plat approval.
All the comments of this plat have been reviewed, and all the comments have been made in, to meet the standards of the Public Works Manual and Subdivision Manual. And again, because this is outside the city limits, the Lee County Engineering Department will have to review and provide comments for this plat. The Opelika Engineering Department recommends this plat for preliminary and final plat approval.
Opelika Utilities Board reports that this is in the Smith Station Water Authority service area. Opelika Power Service notes that this is outside the Opelika Power Service territory. We did get some comments from Lee County Highway Department. They did note that the water line needed to be shown, and the, the name of the plat should be more specific, noting a redivision of parcel 4A at minimum.
This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
I'm going to have to excuse my appearance. I work outside. If y'all look at the plat, my name is David DeShields.
Sir, pull the microphone down.
My name is David DeShields. If you see the big rectangular area in behind those four lots, that's my lot. And I've been living there 40 years. My wife's family's been in there for generations. And it's not, I'm not going to object to the, I mean, people have a right to move out into, there's always going to be change. I understand that. It's just the man that owned that property before he died, we had a great relationship. He said, "I don't want to do nothing but grow trees." I thought this is great. And I, people who had concerns over 15 or 50 feet, I understand that. And I built my house right in the middle of my lot, because I saw this coming sometime. So I've got 300 feet on either side of me where nobody can build. So I, I really don't have any complaints, but I just wanted to reiterate that I've tried to make my property just as clean and as pollution-free as possible. It's got a nice creek running through it, and I've got a little pond there for irrigation and stuff like that. I just hope that when they build, they won't be, I worry about septic tanks and things running onto my property. That's, I've respected other people's property. I want them to do the same for me. And if anybody who, Corbett or anybody wants to come see me, I was 2125 Lee Road 158, just come down the driveway. And I'll be happy to talk to anybody. Can y'all answer anything, like, is it going to be just single-family dwellings there?
I can't.
So because this is in the county, currently, the city doesn't have any regulations stating that it's going to be, that it's required to be a single-family or specific use. I believe they might have noted it on the plat that it was intended to be residential.
Four-acre lot, so I assume there's just going to be one house built per lot. That would be, I, I wish one person would buy them all and build one house. That'd be the most wonderful thing of all.
I, I would have to defer to the, the applicant or his representative, whether or not they have any specific market or plans. It will be resident?
Oh, they will be. Are you Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
Oh, okay. So, and I'm probably going to be the core person in the end, because I imagine they're going to be pretty good-sized houses. And I'd like to be a good neighbor with them. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I haven't lived in a neighborhood since I graduated from Auburn in 1976, so it's going to take a little getting used to. But I just hope that it will be, you know, it'll be well-regulated. And as old as I am, I'm still with the fire department over there, so they might have to see me if they have medical problems, but we'll discuss that later. And I don't know what you're going to plan on for the 62 acres behind. There is hunting club over there. That would be there. It might end hunting back there, but I don't hunt anyway anymore. And there's a lot of different wildfires. I've cataloged a lot of plants over there. So hopefully, y'all won't just clear everything. And there's a lot of good hardwoods. And like I say, I've respected the man who lived there. I did not wander on his property or anything. I know where the lines are. And then the pipeline and the power line, they are not public access. Those are private. I mean, it is privately owned there. So, you know, I just would, hopefully, people will respect me, because I've just grown up in an era when we respected everybody's property, that's all. And I can't, I, I'll be happy to talk to anybody that comes out there. If they want to go over anything, that'd be great. Hopefully, we won't have to build fences or anything. That'd be wonderful. And if it's only four or five families, that'd be great. Anyway, I've wasted much time. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed, commissioners.
Motion for preliminary and final plat approval with staff recommendation.
Got a second? Any discussion?
I have one question. Matt, on the 42 acres that's left, is there going to be access to that property? There's a power line across that corner in.
So there is a power line right through there, but there's, it's kind of hard to see, but there is a, quite a significant frontage right there and a driveway that runs along the side of the property that I assume that they will use for access to the remainder in the back. That is probably potentially wide enough to where if they ever did want to develop that property back there, they could put in a full street. But that would be a later date, and that would be a separate application at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item five.
Yes, sir. Item five is a request for final plat approval. This is the Willows plat number one. The subject property is located at the terminus of Sawyer Drive and Catherine Drive, which is south of Sawyer Woods. The applicant is Blake Rice with Barrett Simpson, representing Trademark Quality Homes LLC. Currently, the property is undeveloped and is zoned R3. So the planning commission in, in 2019 approved 130 lots, excuse me, not for Sawyer Woods, Stevens Woods, Phase 6, which is this entire bottom section here. It has since changed ownership and changed titles to the Willows. This plat would be for 62 of those 130 lots. The overall density for this would be 2.7 units per acre. The R3 zone allows a maximum of three and a half units per acre. These lots, and let me go ahead and move to this, so these lots, for the most part, except for just a few, do exceed the 10,000 square foot minimum. There were eight lots, or excuse me, not eight lots, three lots, 27 through 30 right here. I guess that's four lots. They are just under the 10,000 minimum square foot, but they do back up to open space, which the applicant has informed us that there should be no problems meeting that minimum lot size. Excuse me, there's, there are eight lots, I apologize. 27 through 30, and then 56 through, 56 through 59. Those lots, again, should all be able to be easily adjusted to meet the minimum lot size without substantially changing the plat at all. As I mentioned, this plat does have two connections, one to Catherine Drive that's existing As I mentioned, this plat does have two connections, one to Catherine Drive that's existing, one to Sawyer Drive, which is existing, so that will connect those two long streets together. This does have a stub, a street that will stub out to some property owned by the Opelika Industrial Development Authority, which goes to the Fox Run, Fox Run Parkway, I believe, through there. I'm not sure that this will ever be developed due to the topography, but we have left a connection there. I apologize, I'm not sure why we've lost our connection to.
It's not a stream in the back?
So there is a, the, the line you have running back through here is a stream that has been noted, and then they've also placed a buffer on both sides of it. So back, back to the final part of the report. The original planning commission approval required the sidewalks be required on at least one street, side of the street, and underground utilities, which we still recommend. Planning staff is recommending final plat approval of this, subject to the following: that sidewalks be installed on one side of the street, underground utilities be installed, increase the size of the eight lots to meet the minimum ten thousand square foot lot size for R3, add a drainage easement along the north property line of forty-eight and fifty, as it's shown on Stevens Woods Phase Three plat, and that's just right up here. And then add a lot number for sanitary sewer pump station lot forty-two through fifty-five. And so, excuse me. That is this small little lot that is kind of showing right here by itself. This is a pump station that they are going ahead and kind of noting its location. I will note, we did learn today that the pump station is not completed, and so we would recommend that any approvals be subject to that being finalized prior to any signatures being, being placed on the plat.
There's a couple of other items.
Oh, and, and I'll let, we'll let Mr. Parker go through those, and Mr. Hillier may have some other items to add as well.
Engineering.
The plat itself meets all standards with the comments of Mr. Mosley as presented. The engineering department and other utilities, as well as the public works, has inspected the construction of this infrastructure, and it meets the standards of the public works manual. There are a few items that have not been completed, as noted before. There has not been an installation of stop signs that is required by our requirements. Also, the as-built documents have not been submitted, and the sewer and lift station is still incomplete. Is there anything else, Matt?
Well, there's no vacuum test, but they're gonna be doing that supposedly the coming week or this week. The lift station being completed, the street signs, as Scott said, and one mandrel test, but most of it's minor, but we'll hold off till they complete these.
So, so it is recommended, recommendation of the engineering department that we, that final plat be approved, and we will hold signatures until these items are completed.
Opelika Utilities reports that water service is available through the water main in the right-of-way of Sawyer Drive, and Opelika Power Service notes that this is outside of their power service territory. Mr. Rice is here representing the application, if you have any questions for him.
This item does not require a public hearing. Commissioners, I need a motion.
Make a motion for final plat approval based on staff recommendations and requirement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item six.
Item six is a conditional use approval for a racetrack, gas station, convenience store, truck stop. This is located at eleven-oh-seven Columbus Parkway. The applicant is Bert Boykin and Martin Evans, representing Racetrack Petroleum Incorporated, for the property owner RS Hospitality LLC, Manav Hospitality and Hena Investments LLC. Says currently that this is undeveloped, that's definitely not true. The subject property is comprised of six-point-two acres. On that six-point-two acres, you have four different parcels. So you have two existing motel hotels located here along Anon Street and then fronting on Columbus Parkway. You also have the restaurant attached to one of those, which is currently a Durango's Mexican restaurant. And so the subject properties primarily are zoned C3 with Gateway Quarter Primary. There is one small section of R1 that would need to be rezoned, and the applicant's aware of that, and the approval would be subject to approval of this rezoning, which they would bring next month if granted a conditional approval. The subject property is located about nine-hundred feet from the exit sixty-two off Interstate eighty-five, eighty-five at Columbus Parkway. So here you see the layout proposed for the development. Columbus Parkway would be along the bottom of this. You would have a convenience center located in the middle. Passenger pumps would be located along the frontage facing Columbus Parkway. And then behind, you would have a truck fueling section, a truck scale, and then fifteen truck parking spaces along the rear. One point, we looked at this as it was submitted, and initially, it was submitted as a convenience station as we were going through a review and preparing it for notification. Based on the number of parking spaces located on the back, this technically falls under a truck stop, which is kind of the, we have kind of varying degrees, so we have a standard convenience station that would be primarily for passenger vehicles, and we have truck fueling, which means that they are, do have truck fueling pumps, and, but a limited number of parking spaces for trucks. They also don't have any showers, they don't have any sleeping accommodations or things like that. And so this, or repair center. And then you have a truck stop, which has potentially all of the above. So it has pedestrian, or not pedestrian, vehicular traffic, you have truck traffic fueling, then you can have truck repair, showers, sleeping accommodations, all of the above. This request and application does not contain any showers or sleeping accommodations as such. The only difference between this and a truck fueling station is that instead of having, I believe, up to, let's say, either ten or twelve parking, up to twelve parking spaces, they have fifteen spaces, and so that kicks it into the truck stop classification. The, there are some special development standards specifically related to truck stops, which this development will have to comply with. That includes that the entire development has to be within fifteen-hundred feet from the interstate right-of-way, which this is. No truck stop shall be located greater than a quarter mile from the intersection of the interstate exit ramp and the cross street, which this is about nine-hundred feet away. All parking areas should be all-weather hard surface. All lights will be shielded and oriented in a manner that prevents spillage onto adjoining property owners or interfere with traffic. Where possible, it should be recessed into canopies. A public address system should not be audible at any property line. No repair or service bay should be oriented so that the interior is visible from the corridor street. There must be a separator within the drainage system of cleaning agents or being rinsed off of vehicles for washing or rinsing. Vehicles undergoing, undergoing repair, painting, bodywork shall remain inside the enclosed structure, and no outside display of goods for sale is allowed. Into the access points, there is a access point here directly off of Columbus Parkway, and then there is a access point off of Anon Street as well. And so-
That's an existing street?
Anon is an existing street, yes, sir. There are twenty gas pumps provided for passenger vehicles and seven gas pumps for semi-trucks or tractors. The convenience store is approximately eighty-one hundred square feet with a quick-service food area. The, all the buildings and canopies meet the setbacks. There are forty-four off-street parking spaces, two handicap spaces, and there's a private dumpster along the rear lot line, which shows it being enclosed. There is a landscape plan, and I'll show that. So here's an elevation of the convenience building. So you have the front elevation at the bottom, what will be visible from Columbus Parkway. You have the rear elevation from the truck parking in the middle, and then the sides at the top, so it looks like it's primarily all brick. Here you see the canopies. And then here you can see a landscape plan, and so what you'll see is most of the landscaping is, is along the perimeter with some interior parking landscaping as well, and that is what we would have recommended based on the use and potentially mitigating any negative effects on adjacent property owners. The landscape plan does meet the requirements, including fifteen-foot front buffer. They do, one point that we have pointed out is that this site does exceed the maximum seventy percent impervious surface ratio that water cannot go through. In this case, seventy-three and a half percent is impervious. That equates, I think roughly, to about nine thousand square feet, which they will either have to figure out how to remove that amount from the request if you approve this, or they'll have to seek a variance to the, to the request. As I said, the exterior wall is primarily brick with some, I believe, ephes along the top. We have made a recommendation that the canopies for the passenger vehicles, the supports be clad in a corridor-approved material, and suggested that they be brick veneer similar to the existing building. With that, we are recommending conditional use approval, subject to the following: city council per the rezoning of the R1 lot to C3 Gateway Quarter Primary. The subdivision plat that combines all the lots into one be approved. The impervious surface area ratio either be reduced to meet the seventy percent requirement or a variance be granted. And then to make sure that the enclosed dumpster, an opaque fence, gate height, the, excuse me, enclosed dumpster with an opaque fence and gate height so the dumpster's not visible from the outside. Canopy lights and pole lights should be shielded from the excessive layer of motorists and adjacent properties. Install exterior materials on all canopy columns selected from the exterior material list in the Gateway Quarter requirements. And the racetrack signs shown on the property and site dimensions and legend are not approved with this conditional use, and those will be a separate review and approval administratively.
Engineering.
The developer will be required to submit a site construction and grading plan for drainage, utility, and detention for the site to the engineering and public works department. This is for land disturbance and erosion control, specifically end utilities and drainage. Because this site has access to U.S. highway managed by the Alabama Department of Transportation, the site plan and access request will be, need to, will need to be submitted to ALDOT for approval. The city does not have any input or approval authority to the new access, other than Anan Street. ALDOT has specific approval authority on that. Now, according to Anan Street, our minimum spacing that we have on the city street, existing city street, is a hundred foot. There are a couple of the accesses that are on Anan Street that will need to meet that, that spacing requirement. Other than that, the engineering department has no comments or concerns with this proposal and recommends conditional use approval.
The Opelika Utilities Board reports that this, that water is accessible through the right-of-way of Anon Street, and Opelika Power Service notes that the Opelika Power, that this is in Opelika Power and Alabama Power Service's territory.
This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
My name, my name is Bert Boykin. My address is two thousand one Park Place North, Suite 540, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two zero three. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Racetrack Petroleum. With me tonight is Chris and some of me from Racetrack, and we are here in support of the application for conditional use approval. I have a pamphlet that I would like to pass out that contains mostly the information that Mr. Mosley hit just a moment ago, but also some additional points that I will quickly discuss. Racetrack has over five hundred corporate-owned and operated stores throughout the southeast. If any of you have been to various parks of Georgia and Florida, you probably have either seen or visited one of these sites. They provide a clean, well-run, and well-maintained site that, you know, provides stability and, you know, and expected experience from a traveler or member of the community when they come to a various racetrack, gas station, convenience store. On page three, I'll tell you a little bit about what the site offers from a food and beverage standpoint, as well as the community contributions that Racetrack provides. Following that, we have the conceptual landscape plan that Mr. Mosley hit on, as well as renderings, building elevations, canopy elevations and the like. One thing that I will say is, we're under contract to purchase five lots, three separate owners. Closing has yet to occur. We're going through the administrative approval process of our contracts, and given that, we have not undertaken full design at this point, civil design. So when you get in and start moving dirt and performing demo, there inevitably will be challenges that might require some slight changes to the, the, the design of the site plan or these renderings, but ultimately, what you're looking at is substantially what will be built on the site. Lastly, economic impact. As far as the sales tax that's projected to be collected on behalf of Opelika, gas tax would be one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars annually, and then on inside sales, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars annually. So we believe that this site presents mutual benefit for the citizens and the city itself. So we're here to answer any questions that anyone might have. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, need a motion?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, let's do a motion first and a second, and then go to get into this discussion, if you don't mind. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion, go ahead.
How long can a truck park there?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
So, and they sleep there?
Potentially, yeah. They, they wouldn't be able to sleep there. There's no showers, there's no overnight accommodations, but we allow parking up to twenty-four hours.
Go ahead.
I have a question on the area.
I have a question on the aerial photo. It's like, oh, there's little-
Our job is to keep-
Take, turn around.
I'm sorry. On that aerial photo or on that photo right there, there's a little piece, an ale projection there to the side. Can you tell me about that piece of the property?
That is just going to be landscaped and, uh, un- So there'll be a stormwater facility over there. That's where all the, on, if anything will go-
Attention.
Okay.
Do you, uh, do you need his name?
Yes, sir. Could you please give us your name, just your- Sir, Samia Lee, 200 Gallardo Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstention? Motion carries. Item seven.
Yes, sir. Item seven is a request for a conditional use approval. This is to have a duplex and single-family home on a single lot. The subject property is located at 201 First Place at the corner of Avenue A and South First Place. The applicant here is Emily Key representing Key Concepts LLC, and I believe Mike Marr did the site plan here. So currently, there is a single-family home located on the rear of the property here that takes access off South First Place. The applicant is requesting to place a duplex here located along the frontage on, that would be off Avenue A. The subject property is zoned R4, and R4 allows multifamily residential as a conditional use. Where multifamily residential is allowed conditionally, the conditional use can be granted for multiple single-family or duplex lots on a single piece of property. This subject property is approximately eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet or zero point two-five acres. The existing home is, according to the county, about seven hundred and twenty square feet. This dwelling, as I said, is somewhat older. It looks like potentially around the nineteen forties again from the county and might be a legal, legally non-conforming structure just because of how close it's built to the side property line and, and that it was built in compliance when it was built. The second structure, as I said, would be, or based on looking at the site, there might have been a second structure here located along the frontage. I'm not, not a hundred percent positive. But going back to at least nineteen ninety-nine, I didn't see any, any, any record of it on any aerial photos. The proposed duplex would be eight hundred square feet, which would equate to roughly four hundred square feet per side of the duplex or per unit. When we look at conditional uses in areas where there's some question, the conditional use follows some, some general standards and criteria for review, whether it's in harmony with comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, whether the use is needed and what effect it would have on surrounding neighborhood or whether there's adequate public utilities and services to handle it. In looking at this, there's, does not appear to any, be any reason to believe that there is not adequate utilities or that it would have substantial impact on traffic. The parking is typically not what we prefer to see where it's kind of pull-in, pull-out. But that would be something we would discourage, may not be completely prohibited. The, the bigger discussion, I think, is, is whether the use is, is of need. And I think there's been a lot of discussion in the community recently about the need for smaller units by some people. We do cap single-family units at eight hundred square feet. Other units could potentially be smaller in, in the case of duplexes. The issue that we really looked at though here is what does the, how does this fit in with the surrounding neighborhood? And, and the neighborhood is, is definitely in a state of flux. There's, there are quite a few vacant properties through here. And I'll show you a quick picture of the lot looking from first place. I don't believe those swings are there right now, but you can see the smaller, uh, single-family home kind of at the back of the lot. And then this is an overhead just kind of showing the site from above. And so what you'll notice is there is quite a bit of vacant property located through here where homes either were and were torn down over time, or they've just never been built. There are quite a few homes in this area that are in, in somewhat states of disrepair and, and need some work. But looking through the overall area, many of the homes through here are still single-family homes. I didn't see many duplex or multi-unit homes located through this area. There are some, I believe, on Avenue B that have, have been approved and are under construction. The R4 zone allows a density of nine units per acre. And, and so the, because this is about a quarter acre lot, that would equate to about two point two-five units per, for this, this property. The planning commission does have the ability to increase density by twenty-five percent for conditional uses when they meet certain criteria. That would get them up to two point eight-one units per acre. But that would still exceed the allowable, the three units would exceed the allowable density for this lot. So if, if this were approved, it would still require a zoning border adjustment variance to allow an additional unit. And while there may be a, a market or a need for smaller units, we don't feel that the, the current configuration follows the current standards for the zoning ordinance or the surrounding property. If it is a desire of the planning commission in the city to increase the number of affordable units through infill strategies, the planning staff believes it should be done in a much more uniform and comprehensive approach, looking at a larger area and, and have more of a, a plan to how we would allow those additional units. I think by adding an individual, allowing an individual property to exceed the standards at this location would lead to inconsistencies and potential claims of unfairness. And so with that being said, we are recommending denial of the conditional use request. Denial.
Engineering.
Because there's no plan for substantial, substantial side or drainage improvements for this application, the building's basically property that all the land disturbance permits needed. It will not be required for site plan. It will be submitted to the engineering department for review. The engineering department has no other comments or concerns with this proposal. They recommend conditional use.
Opelika Utilities Board reports that the duplex and single-family home must have separate service lines and meters for a total of three if approved. Opelika Power Service reports that the, the development would be in the Opelika Power Service and Alabama's Power Service territory.
This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
I'm Emily Key, 301 Twin Lakes Avenue, Opelika 36801. Sorry, I'm short.
Speak directly into it.
All right. So based on what the neighbors have told me since I purchased this property, there was a property, a, a unit in that corner that had, they don't tell me like what year it got torn down, but it has been there in the past. And so what I'm asking for at this time, and I know I'd have to do the zoning variance as well, is legally, I can build an eight hundred to one thousand square foot, single-family home without approval from this board or the zoning, I believe, from what I've been talking with, with Matt about. I might be wrong.
You would, you would, to have two single-family homes, you would still need a conditional use approval.
Okay. And it, it would be much more likely to pass with it being just two homes. And what I've, I've been here before you in the past is Key Living Solutions regarding tiny homes. We have three hundred and forty-three applications for one-bedroom units in the city of Opelika with our housing authority. And I understand that it would make way more sense for the city of Opelika to do a comprehensive plan to use smaller homes as infill to fix that need. But the problem is that they're not doing it. There aren't plans really in motion yet to do it, and the city does not own any of these empty lots. So I am making it my mission to help fix that problem. And I already have been creating duplexes, turning single-family homes into duplexes in the past nine years. And this is just the first time that I'm actually trying to build something new instead of only remodeling. So if I were to build an eight hundred square foot, single-family home, it could be a two-bedroom, you know, two-bath home, whatever, and you could have two adults and two kids living in that home. Well, this would be two smaller units, still just two adults, maybe two kids if they're single parents, whatever. So the issue that I see, and I understand that I'm probably going to get a denial on this, but I was willing to, to spend the money to be here in front of you today to say that we need to, to make a change. When we talk about how many units are allowed per acre, we use density in the term of units instead of population. If I built this house differently, the same number of people, the same number of cars, the same number of toilet flushes would happen, but I wouldn't be helping the same number of family units. So we look at it very differently, city versus what is actually needed in that community. And so if I'm denied today, I'll find another way. But you'll, you'll see a lot more of me. I really am trying to fix this situation that we have in Opelika. And I just, I look forward to hearing your comments and questions and how we can all move forward together to fix what's going on in our city right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners.
I'll make a motion for denial based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead.
I had a question about the house that's existing there. Is that house occupied now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Single-family?
Yes, sir. And it's smaller than the seven hundred square feet that was listed. I think it's about five hundred.
I, I think that, I, I know the city, we went through a lot of this about the size dwelling we wanted in the city. And I don't think four hundred square feet quite fits that. I think we came up with eight hundred, Matt, per dwelling?
And that's, you know, I, I think that's something we were looking at. Previously, we, we quoted eight hundred per dwelling, but looking at the ordinance more closely, it specifically says eight hundred per single-family unit. Which I think if we wanted this to, minimum eight hundred square foot unit to extend to townhouses and to duplexes, we probably need to clarify that a little bit more. But I, I, I do think that might have been the, the intent back when it was done.
I, I, I don't know that tiny homes are the answer in the city.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick comment. I would agree. I, I don't know that tiny homes is, is the absolute answer to, to our problems. I do agree that there is an issue with affordable housing in the city of Opelika, and I think Matt and there's several others that are already working on that. I know you were in a meeting, I want to say last week, I wasn't able to be there, but there is a, there is, there are ongoing discussions about affordable housing. With me, it's all about equity. This is, this is Ward Two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Certainly so.
And so I would love to see, you know, this discussion comprehensively throughout the entire city so that we can consider doing homes, affordable homes in every ward. And so that it's not just Ward One and Two. And I think that has to be a priority for the, for the city. I know that there's a committee already working on that, and I would certainly continue to push for those things as well, too. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor or opposed? I'm sorry.
All in favor of a denial motion.
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries to deny. Item eight, and you want to do a report on both and then we'll vote and have a discussion on each one of them?
Yes, sir. That, that, I think was how we've handled these in the past. Item eight, A and B are regarding the piece of property, portion of the piece of property we talked about with items one. So this would be rezoning the three point nine-one acres that it's currently zoned R3 in the kind of middle of the National Village Master Development Plan. The proposed property, as I said, is currently zoned R3. I believe the retirement systems of Alabama purchased this within the last couple of years and are now before you to rezone it to be part of the master development plan. Similarly, the, the future land use for this was left as low-density residential even with the R3 land use category. It probably should have been medium density. Because we are proposing to rezone this to be part of the National Village Master Plan, it would be re-designated under the future land use plan if you so choose to as a planned unit development. And that would be, bring more consistency with the overall plan. One thing to note, the R3 zone allows three and a half units per acre. So at, at four units, it would, it would allow, or excuse me, roughly four acres, you'd, you'd be right at around twelve or thirteen units allowed in there, which is basically the number of lots that are from the previous plan shown in this kind of four-acre section now. So I, I think that's, and it might have been one thing we should have noted previously is that the previous subdivision is, is probably about the same density as if it were left at R3. We feel the rezoning, though, provides more consistency with the overall master plan and more consistency with the, the surrounding properties. From the zoning standpoint, again, this is a, a large, a small piece and a large eleven hundred square, eleven hundred acre development. The, this would also include a revision to the master plan to increase the density through this part of Village Eight. Initially, this section was shown as having twenty-six single-family homes. And as the planning commission approved earlier, the applicant is proposing to take it to fifty-one overall units through this area with the additional four, three point nine acres. Overall, the, the density change is, is fairly minimal, moving only kind of tenths or hundreds of a percent. Much like the National Village Master Plan, this proposed subdivision section shows those large buffer areas between, between developments and the lots not extending all the way to the corners of the streets. And so we feel like it is consistent with the remainder of the National Village Plan. With that, we are recommending a increase of the overall unit count and density for Village Eight and the overall master plan, and a positive recommendation to city council for the rezoning of three point nine-one acres from R3 to the PUD for the National Village Master Plan.
Engineering and public utilities and power service have no report, right?
No comments.
Yes, sir. And I, I will note, this is one of the, I believe this is the, the current plan for this area. So you see the residents here in, in Lone Eagle, many that spoke today. This is the portion of Village Eight A that is currently proposed. And so here you see the red box that shows the piece that was not part of the overall plan.
Okay. This item is open for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to comment? Public, excuse me, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners. Let's, let's do a vote on the amendment to the future land use. And that's, the, the commission can vote on it, so.
So that would be a, a change of the future land use plan from low-density residential to a planned unit development.
Okay, I need a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we need a motion for the city council on the rezoning.
Make a motion for a positive recommendation to the city council for rezoning.
Take it.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item nine.
Yes, sir.
Item nine is a petition to vacate the right of way. This is property located west of Fox Run Parkway. The proposed property being requested to vacate is, is part of the Opelika Industrial Development Authority's property. You'll see kind of here shown on a previous subdivision plat that was approved. And so it's vacating the portion of property located between lots five and six and 8A of the Fox Run Industrial Park, first edition, first revision, or first revision, first edition. Previously, there was a road that was shown to go all the way through here, would go past the street that goes to Jordan's Gate and then would extend to Greater Peace Baptist Church. As the development has occurred along this area, the road was never built or constructed and the portions of this road have been vacated over time. So here between 10A and 18A, you see where portions previously have been vacated. The Opelika Industrial Development Authority no longer wishes to have these lots as separate lots and they're combining, in the process of combining them all together. I think we'll have a plat that does just that at your next meeting. But as part of this application, they need to vacate the proposed segment which runs through this and is approximately .75 acres. Staff recommends a, the planning commission send a positive recommendation to city council to approve the vacation of this unnamed right of way between lots five, six, and 8A of Fox Run Industrial Park, first revision, first edition.
No report, engineering, no utilities or power, power servicing report. No public hearing, commissioners. I make a motion.
I, I did want to note that there are no utilities located in the right of way either.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?